All right.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I called to order this meeting in North Bend City Council work session on July 27th for 30 PM. January, okay. I'm hoping tax season is over. Okay, I guess we'll have a roll call.
Councilwoman.
Here.
Council President Gargoyle.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Present.
Councilor Torres.
Here.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. All right, Jim, you're up, quickly.
I had set a record here. Come on, let's go. Come on. Well, we're not going to get too big a brush. We've got more stuff to cover here.
Like I said, you're not done yet.
So this evening, we're going to talk a little bit about the Fire Department's annual report that we had. I think all of you have copies in front of you. I'm not going to insult you by reading every word on it because you guys can all read pretty well. But I will make a point that two, a couple of the things that we have were priorities for the city, for the strategic goals. One was priority 2A, which is continue with the maintenance schedule for the fire department, including the purchase of a new fire ladder truck. And the other one, 2D, create defensible space and clear invasives in the city park. So last year, if you look at our goals that we had set, we had goals set to purchase new vehicles. And it's really kind of neat when you actually look at the goals that we had set and then when we accomplished those goals last year. So in last year, we actually received two new rapid response vehicles. These are Dodges, which I know Councilor Hamilton is happy about Dodge. These are Dodge 5500s. They carry 300 gallons of water and they're more maneuverable, they're four-wheel drive, and we're able to get them around the community a lot simpler in the event of a major disaster that happens. And then in our day-to-day, the less urgent calls that we have, we're able to take those out and then we're actually able to save the wear and tear on our bigger apparatus. We also received two new staff vehicles. And the two new staff vehicles replacing larger vehicles that we had. We had the F-250 that we were using and we also had an Explorer that we were using. So we replaced those with two Expedition, or I'm sorry, yes, Explorers, I'm sorry. And so we replaced them with two Explorers. They're smaller, more maneuverable, and they do a lot better on maintenance cost as well. All of these vehicles were purchased using the federal funds, the ARPA funds, so there was no local tax money spent for any of these four vehicles that we talked about, which is a great thing for us. Now, it's not tobacco. It's cigars and seize candy. And if you'll look in the immortal words of Hannibal Smith from the 18th, "I love it when a plan comes together." And that's what happened. It was fantastic. So, and I won't try to talk with it because I don't like a total meatball there. But that's what happened, is a plan came together. If you look at the next part that we're talking here, as a result of these upgrades, the maintenance and fuel costs have been significantly decreased, is what we have. The equipment maintenance dropped 74% from last year at the same time. Now, that can be due to whenever we have an incident that does happen, it's big money. But there's a direct correlation. There's a reason that it went down that far. And if you look at our fuel costs in the same time last year, it's went down 11%. So I think that's truly, as Mr. Smith would say, that's a plan coming together. We are actively looking at trying to replace our aging ladder truck, which was built in 1994. The estimate cost for a new ladder truck now is 1.7 million. When we started looking for the ladder trucks a number of years ago, it was way down to 900,000. But it just continues to climb. The most recent quote we got was 1.7 million dollars. So we are looking for grants and partnerships and we're trying to do what we can to get a new ladder truck for our city. If you'll note, to make a note as well, the grants that we have been successful for in 2024, little over $725,000. And we are not stopping on that as well, we're continuing on. We are going straight ahead, trying to get as many grants as we can because grants really do help out a lot with our city. Some of the things that we did from as far as public engagement this year, we do a lot of fire extinguisher training. A private company has, wants us to come out, we come out, we have a pit that we actually put propane through, light it on fire, and the companies actually get to put out fire for real. And it's a really good thing to get enough confidence to be able to actually put out a fire rather than just sit there and watch a video and say, here's how you do it. We actually go through the process, they feel some heat on them and realize how important it is to do it properly. We're doing business inspections now, which we're going out, we're going into all the businesses in North Bend. We be sure that they meet the standards. We've been through some training on that through the local deputy state fire marshal. And it's, we've been received very, very well with the businesses. They've been very, very reactive as well. Once we come in and we'll mention something, by the time the guys get back to the station, a lot of times they'll actually get notifications that they've already taken care of everything. They'll send them an email and say, look, we've already got these things taken care of. So it is helping to reduce the chance of fires and emergencies as well. Plus, we're getting into these buildings and we're able to put out the fires better, deal with emergencies when they do happen. Fire Prevention Week, we do a lot of, I know, we are involved with Hillcrest School for some things up there with that. We also like that at the last week of school, we're able to go down and actually transport the kids after they go down and have their picnics. We transport them back up the hill to school so that the teachers and the students don't have to go back all the way up there. We take this opportunity to also do a little bit of public education as well on that. And then, of course, we have the high school that we do our Miss Flame Week with, and that's our way to get to the high school students to give a little public education as well for fire safety. We were, community events, we hosted the Waffles with Santa. I don't know how many of you guys were able to see that, and it was really, it's really neat seeing that many people come through. We have Santa there, he greets them, they come in, they have the waffles, thus the name Waffles with Santa. And it's really a good public event. It's a way to kick off the entire Christmas season because then after that, we actually go down and we have the light parade and we have many, many different events that happen as well. So it's kind of a kickoff to that. Let's not forget Palm Sunday. That's when our annual pancake feed happens. So every year, Palm Sunday, we've been doing that for 50 years, and I say it every year, but it's true. I don't know how those pancakes taste the way they do. I can make them at home with the same batter, the same, I can take the batter home and try to cook it, and it just does not come out the same way. It comes, they're, they're good pancakes there at the fire station. As you know, our staffing, we're a combination fire department, so we have full-time staff and we have volunteers. And we have professional volunteers because we have very, very good, highly-trained volunteers. They do a great job. They're involved in the things that we do as well. Our career staff leads out and we just have a very good working relationship between all of them. And it's really important to have that where your volunteers and your full-time staff all get along and go towards a common goal. When we have a fire, everybody's got the block turnouts on and everybody does a great We do have the, like, right down here, we have two administrative staff, three lieutenants, seven engineer firefighters, and 20 volunteer firefighters. And all of these people, administrative to volunteers, are all active firefighters as well. When a fire happens, you may have Assistant Chief Wattington or myself put on our turnout gear and we'll go inside of a fire when the other one's running the fire. Our lieutenants are not lieutenants that sit around and do training all the time only. When the fire happens, these guys are the ones that go inside as well as our, all of our firefighters. So everybody is a firefighter and we all do that job. While then mitigation and defensible space, that falls back to one of the goals set up by the city. And we've been very active with that. We had seven, we've done seven projects so far. We've eliminated underbrush. And once we do that underbrush elimination, then we actually go out and there's a skid steer that we've purchased through this grant as well, and we're able to maintain that so that the brush doesn't come back and become that same hazard that we just eliminated. The ones that we've done is if you'll, Coos Bay North Bend Waterboard property up on Lincoln Street, there's a million gallon water tank there as well. So that's an infrastructure issue. We've actually increased the safety of the infrastructure of the water at that point by making it safer, avoiding fires happening up there. As I recall, that was about six and a half or seven acres that actually up there. So it was a big project and it really made a huge difference up there. The Pittam Luke and Simpson Park, those are two different projects and everybody knows about those, you've seen them, and it's made a huge difference, eliminating fighter, fire potential, and not just potential, but eliminating fires that happen. Pony Creek Road, that's a project that happened between Pony Creek and Hamilton, and we've been in there many times. And let me tell you, when I was talking about we all fight fires, I drug myself up and down that hill a couple of times, and that's one steep hill. And there's a lot of potential for fire to build and go on up and if it would go and break across Hamilton Street, it could potentially go all the way up to Hillcrest. And so we've really eliminated a lot of fire hazards as well there. Down at Pony Village Mall, we've had a project there. You guys may know Smoker's Trail, it goes between the high school and Pony Village. We've eliminated a lot of that brush in there and it used to be places where there was actually a, oh, there was a shed that was back in there. And some, there's some people back in there that have started fires, and so that, that's all gone now. And you can actually see in there, there's not a place for people to hide and start fires. And it's just very beneficial. Over at Shoreline Church, you can see up from Newmark that has been cleared off in there, and that's another infrastructure project because there's also a nice, Pacific Power has one of their substations in there as well. So if we get a fire in there, this is, we're able to eliminate a lot of the fire hazard around there. And Pacific Power also was involved in it. They went and cleaned up a lot of the brush that was in there as well. And then the wooden, wooded area in the complex behind Buy Mart, that place, we had a lot of fires in there and that has been eliminated out as well. And it's really went the way we want to. So I can pull out the old cigar again and say, we can notice when a plan comes together. Because if you look on our, the reports that we've had, our emergency statistics that we had, our fires went down from 2023 to 2024. And that went, that was directly related to our mitigation projects that we had, without a doubt. We didn't have, we had very minimal wildland fires this year, and the places that we eliminated a lot of this brush was actually a place, the place where we did not have fires. And behind Buy Mart, we had numerous fires, Pittam Luke, numerous fires, Simpson Park, numerous fires. And we had one or two maybe at the most in the year. So it's definitely, it shows that this plan definitely came together and it works out very well. And you can see that we're, we gained a total of 18% since 2019 in our calls. But I just really wanted to highlight that, that the fires did go down by us putting a plan together, putting it in place and sticking with it. I think that we'll see that in the future as well. Looking ahead, we do remain committed to improving the safety in North Bend by pursuing grants, building partnerships, and delivering exceptional emergency response. We will continue our efforts to enhance the fire department's capabilities while responding responsibly, managing our resources. Together, we're creating a safer and more resilient community.
Good job.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
What do you got?
So, a couple things. So for the other part, like, give me some examples of what that means.
Other. Well, we can say water rescues.
Okay.
We can go, people that are lost, and we end up actually looking for them. We have...
Could it just be like as random as like someone called me and I didn't know what to, like, I'm thinking like my example that I have when I call the fire department.
Yeah.
Really, is it just like random things that don't, are not categorized?
Yeah, things that don't fit directly into the fire category. Fire categories would be something that's actually on fire, report of, report of smoke in an area, medical calls or someone gets hurt and then requires that assistance, and then it's simpler just to actually put in there, other.
Yeah. Is it like the dog that fell down and then you had to go get the dog?
Yep.
Is that another?
That's another, that's a rope rescue, that's another thing that we do on those. So other is just simply that, something that's not a fire or an illness.
And then my other question was about like your ladder for, or ladder truck. Have you, I mean, I'm just curious, like, how much is like a used one? I don't, I don't know, like, is that, do you usually have to buy them new? Or I'm just curious about what the, or do they go by mileage or how many hours are put on it?
Yeah, it, yes, all those, perfect answer.
Okay.
But used ones, there's a reason that they're getting rid of them.
Okay.
And typically, when a fire department gets rid of them, it's at the end of their useful life.
Okay.
And there's, there's one thing that some places do is they actually do a refurb on them. They'll send them back in and they'll refurb them out. But the bottom line is, if you do a refurb on it, you still have a 1994 vehicle. Even though you'll put new bearings in it, you'll put new tires, you do everything, there's still electronics, there's still, and you, at the end of the day, you still do have an older vehicle still.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and, but we're certainly exploring any options that we can come up with, and if you guys have any ideas, we'll be glad to listen to those because we want to do what we can to get ahead on that. Got a, got an extra 1.7 sitting around, you might want to check for, we can give you the tax ID number if you need that.
Okay. I think just overall with like, especially what you do with the, with the schools, I just hear so many great things about it, how the kids are always just so excited and they always want to go by, like, my cousins, for example, they always want to go walk by the fire department, like, what if the truck's out? I said, okay, I guess we'll go walk. We'll take an extra three blocks to go walk. So, I don't know.
Well, here's a little, here's a little secret. The kids really have a great time with it, but you know, our firemen do too. We enjoy it so much, we're like little kids sometimes when the little kids show up. If kids show up, we want to talk to them, we want to show them our fire stuff, we want to actually give them fire helmets. We want to get them, and by doing that, we're building our future for the fire service and they're also thinking about their fire safety as well. So we, anybody bring your kids by, we'll be glad to show them the fire engines, we'll show them the stuff, we'll give them little tattoos, we'll give them, we'll give them more things than they can handle.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
So before you leave, Chief, I just want to commend the chief, the assistant chief, and the department personnel. Because the reality is, is that we come to you, we've come to the previous council, and we make presentations, and we tell you from a professional standpoint, this is why we need to do what we need to do, and this is what it's going to do for us. And as time elapsed, you start to see the actual benefits. I used to recall folks saying, ah, you're buying a couple four-wheel-drive, you know, toys. They're not toys. We're actually seeing the wear and tear on our larger vehicles being reduced, which extends their life because they do cost so much money. We're seeing our repairs, our fuel, things that are council goals to extend and become more efficient and effective in a fire department. And collectively, since I arrived here in October 2020, I can say that the fire department collectively has written and/or participated in grant writing and has brought in over $1 million in grant funds to this city, which is leveraged with ARPA funds and other funds, extended to be able to ladder those grants, to be able to buy these at no cost out of our general fund to the taxpayer. And those are important things. And so it's disheartening when you see folks in the community not directly supporting us when the folks here are working so hard. We are collecting data and we'll be putting that data out later this week, but it was interesting to find out, you mentioned the relationship within the school system. This city collectively, on average per year, whether it be supports with grants, services, or direct services to the school district, we provide on average over half a million dollars worth of services that don't show up on the books as direct allocations. Because everything they do, say for the school district, whether it be the police department, the library, the fire department, actually has a cost attached to it because we provide services. Like going over every year and spray washing the bleachers, that's a cost to us. It is hours on the equipment. And so folks will say, well, the firefighters aren't doing anything anyway, they're over there. Gas, the trucks are idling, the engines are running, all that's cost. And so bottom line is, there's a reason he's got a cigar and thank gosh, he's not going to light it up.
It's not a real cigar.
Exactly. Like I says, that's why, that's why, thank goodness, he's not going to light it up. Because at the end of the day, it's not, you know, one person, leadership matters, it's a collective, and some of the personnel in that department have written those grant applications. And these are things four years ago was unheard of in that department. So thank you, Chief, thank you, Assistant Chief, and I'd encourage you, next time you're going to get that little fire apparatus out, you know, let us know, let's invite the council and they can come and put fires out too, and feel the heat directly. So, thank you.
You betcha. Did everybody know who Hannibal Smith was, by the way?
Yeah. Do you know the 18?
The 18? Can you take care of that?
Your date, your date and your show.
I know.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
What?
I know it's kind of out of order, but a few years ago, the fire chief that was, I think, before Scott Graham, at that time talked about in the future that we were going to need a new ladder truck, and he was going to have money allocated to a fund, whereas when the time came, we would have money for one. Did that not ever happen?
Since we didn't buy one, probably not.
Well, they wasn't going to buy one at that time. You were putting money aside for future, so you would have the money at that time.
So to help directly, we have our finance director that can answer that question, sir.
We have a fire equipment replacement fund, I don't have the amount of money set aside for it.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have 1.7 million dollars.
We do not.
No.
No, but like I say, you know, I forget what the amount was, but you know, he was suggesting that we do this, so, you know, when the time came, we wouldn't be in a spot where we needed the full amount.
I think that was the one between, who was the little short guy? The other chief.
Me, good.
Yeah. I think that was him.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so for the benefit of the council, it's salient to point this out. So right now, to make ends meet, we are utilizing on an annual basis our reserves. That's like our savings account. Our trajectory, and we'll estimate it again for the next budget year, is that when we started this fiscal year, we were within five years of that savings account depleting itself. So therefore, although we're putting money away, our larger savings account cannot sustain 1.7, and so we're going to have to be creative. We're either going to have to get federal funds, or we're going to have to work with Coos Bay to maybe jointly buy a ladder truck, or something that is going to last. I give huge credit to the fire department because the age of the truck, they go through an annual inspection, we've given the inspection reports to you, and it passes with flying colors, although we've had maintenance issues with that, hydraulics, other issues. But the department is extending the life of that truck and consistently has, and even the inspector who comes out says, wow, it's amazing, this truck is still in this good condition. Put Coos Bay North Bend's truck side by side and you'll appreciate what North Bend's doing. And don't take my word for it, go to each station, take a look. They're, they're night and day. And so to answer the broader question, yes, we're putting a lot of money, but long-term, the city will be insolvent if we don't resolve the larger taxation funding thing, and that's more or less the state, or we internally, as you know, start cutting services. And so, yes, you know, back when that chief was here, love it, good, but we have a CPA, a finance director who has the skills to do the larger analysis, and we've worked collectively at the administrative side to make sure that this council actually knows because, you know, four years, five years, eight years, 10 years ago, you did not know, this council did not know what its longevity was, or how quickly it was eating away. And so every year, the budget grows because of cost escalating, salaries and insurance and payroll keeps going up and benefits, and that's our largest escalator it wears on the budget. That's why we've had over $14 million worth of grant funds that have come in that have stayed off the pressure on that general fund. And if it hadn't been for this management team here, we would already be insolvent, and that's the reality. And again, it's the message that our finance director echoes. We want the public to know, we've shouted it, we've had town hall meetings, we've put it online, and folks still had their head in the sand without realizing what's happened. 63% of all municipalities in this state are fiscally stressed. We're not in this together. You've heard echoes from the county, there's, there's the issues, fiscally stressed with Coos Bay, we're no different. The city to our north, Lakeside doesn't even have taxes. So that is a very long-winded answer to, yes, we have a fund, yes, we're putting away money, but the reality is we cannot afford that ladder truck. And if we could, we would basically eat a large chunk of our reserves unless we can find something else. Because there's not grants out there to give us 1.4, 1.7, or even 2 million for ladder trucks anywhere. And no federal assistance to firefighters grant west of... The Mississippi has allowed any dollars to go towards a fire truck, ladder truck, because the chief's been working it with, with the assistant chief. That's the reality.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that, I'm sorry, I'm eating your time.
Yeah, you're blowing my, yeah. That's all your time's allowed tonight, that's it. Okay, next order of business, we go on to review the council agenda, I guess you get to talk again, you're up.
All right, number one, we have our finance director, Jeff, you wanna come up and briefly speak about the budget calendar? And feel free to get a cigar from the chief.
Yes, it's on the consent calendar, and we put together a calendar for development and approval of the fiscal twenty twenty-six budget. It's got a lot of milestones, a lot of them are internal deadlines to get things done. Key dates that I would, I would say to pay particular attention to is you can anticipate receiving a proposed budget during the first part of May, that designated as May ninth. And then for the first and second budget committee hearings would be May twenty-first and twenty-second. The other really important date, obviously, is the adoption of the budget, and we have that slated for the June tenth council meeting.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, now we have our library director, she'll come up and talk to you about another item on the consent calendar. Ms. Haley.
Good afternoon. As we continue our preparations to renovate the library and in preparation for our reopening, we need to obtain new tables and chairs for our meeting and conference rooms, these areas are available both for library programs and public use. And so we have obtained a quote from South Coast Office in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for those renovations.
Did we already budget for this?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I will say one thing here, and this is on the side of the urban renewal, so I give a huge shout out to Ms. Haley and her team. When we challenged them, they have brought an excessive half a million to the table of grant dollars, when in reality, the city has a contract with the library district. Many folks don't realize that the library exists in our city with a contract with the district. And so although the staff are all locally managed through the city, the district actually has a contract with North Bend, and it says that you shall provide a building and you shall maintain that building. And so although it's our responsibility, we teamed up with the Urban Renewal Agency, and then we challenged Haley to go out and try to bring as many dollars to offset our remaining and draining urban renewal dollars. And so we currently are working with all the taxing districts, as you know, through the Urban Renewal Agency to increase the maximum indebtedness so that we can continue projects in our plan. There is only one taxing authority yet to vote, it's very critical, because if that vote does not go in our favor, the URA cannot raise its maximum indebtedness per law. It happens to be the school board for which the library, the majority of their clients are also clients of the school board and the school system. And so the urban renewal has put in significant money in order to make sure that that building continues for about twenty more years. And without urban renewal dollars, we would not have been able to do that. We're fortunate, unlike Coos Bay, where they are, their library sinking, and they don't have the money available, nor do they have the available URA dollars to do anything at that site. And so I just wanna give Haley and her team big kudos, and there's a critical vote coming up with the school board on February sixth, but they are the only taxing authority not to collectively given, give us a thumbs up. In fact, a number of the school board members have expressed their personal views as opposed to their fiduciary responsibility, and it does not cost the school board one penny to participate because of the funding formula. All other taxing authorities participate financially, the school board does not, they get reimbursed dollar for dollar from the state. And so I wanna point out that all, a hundred percent of all of the other taxing authorities that do participate, no one has expressed any pushback, and they have collaboratively assisted us. The other ones we're getting pushback right now from is the school system, and so we continue to encourage them to collaboratively work with us for the betterment of the city in the future. So, you'll continue to hear more on that topic. So, you have two consent items, as always, if there is a council member that wants to pull one for further conversation, this is your time, and otherwise, there's generally a motion made and no discussion on the consent counter item. Is there anyone that wants to pull an item?
Nope.
All right, thank you. All right, you have public comment, and then you have a public hearing. We'll bring the finance director back, this is a annual process per our charter. So, Mr. Jeff, you got the floor, thank you.
So, yes, we have a public hearing to, for you to receive comment on the proposed city fee increases. We've increased the city fees by two and a half percent, which is the amount that Social Security raised their, their amounts for twenty twenty-five, so we're in line with that. No real significant changes in the fee schedule itself, the one change that we did take out is there were some OLCC fees in there that ours were above what we could actually charge according to the state, so we said, in our minds, the state is the one setting those, and so we pulled those out and just omitted them from our city fee schedule.
Any questions on any of the fees?
Nope.
For the benefit of the council, the charter provision, which draws back to a lawsuit in twenty nineteen that went into effect twenty twenty, we cannot create any new fees, and we cannot raise any existing fees greater than the Social Security index or COLA. And so this has been my directive, is that if there's a charter provision for how much we can raise fees, which is the Social Security COLA, as opposed to what's called the Consumer Price Index, which fluctuates, the CPI West this year, I think, worked out to be two-point-six percent, the current COLA for Social Security, which means it's the raise that those receiving Social Security receive, that's two-point-five percent. So, in my budget proposal for unrepresented employees, whatever the CPI is, is also what we put in for a COLA proposed for the staff, which you'll see that this year, so the, that's two-point-five percent. So we do not make recommendations for unrepresented staff greater than what the COLA is for Social Security. So any overall questions? All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
The next is a council expense request. We do not have to entertain any recusals, because in this case, the mayor's not at this meeting, and is also not at tomorrow's meeting, so the city attorney says y'all are in the clear. This was a request through the mayor, I believe the dates may change, meaning the date of the actual event for the chamber to have the state of the city dress, primarily because they have proposed to move to a room that only holds a capacity about a hundred and four. And it's been my experience that the state of the city address combined with Coos Bay North Bend packs the room, and it's a very popular event. And so we've asked the chamber to either move the date or move the location so that we don't run afoul, and so we, the date may change. However, the mayor is asking for the July Jubilee ambassadors to attend and to then be reimbursed for their lunch expense. And so whenever we have an unfunded expense, so within the council's budget, there's not a budget for, for that. Generally, we budget for your dues and for your travel associated with trainings, and your cost for legal, and then our cost to the Ethics Commission to investigate you if there's a complaint, URA gets a bill too. And so this is simply a formal request, and you're talking less than a hundred bucks.
Yeah.
So, any questions that I can answer about that request?
Other than it seems kinda crazy to even be talking about it.
Well, unfortunately, it's unbudgeted, and so it's your, your budget out of the mayor's, out of the councils. It's no different than, for instance, in the past, we've had a counselor want to go to a training outside, outside of what was budgeted, generally, we budget existing conferences, but if they wanted to go to one-off specialized track, training, it has come to the council for pass. So anything council-related where you wanna incur a cost, yeah, we're gonna bring it to the council and have historically.
Don't we budget for the council to all attend legal organs, these, that's about a thousand bucks a person.
We, not everyone, we budget based on historical attendance, and so we don't budget for every single one of you all to go, because at least in the last four years I've been here, not everybody goes. So we, we budget based on the past historical averages, in fact, that's how we budget just about everything. So, we, we move things up or down based on historical.
Well, I, I think we should be able to find a hundred dollars in the budget somewhere. I mean, these girls that did things for the city, represented the city, I mean, if we spent a hundred bucks to give them a lunch to know, why not?
Yeah. Well, a big part of it also is because there's a familiar connection, and so everything is about transparency.
Yeah.
And so this, this, you're more than welcome to ask your city attorney who's on, but yeah, this is also a transparent request, because the mayor's daughter is one of the ambassadors, so it has more scrutiny than, and I know it seems odd for a cost, but he's here if you wanna ask him, or Marky wanna chime in, so.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the mayor were here, the mayor would need to declare a conflict and, and not vote on this, but the mayor is not here tonight, and is not gonna be here tomorrow night, so the four of you can, can, can choose to act.
Okay, we'll figure it out tomorrow.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, the law's very, very clear that in this case, if you have a drunk family member and they're benefiting because of your position, then it's, it's an automatic ethics complaint, slam dunk, without making sure that the transparency and disclosures aren't made. And so, we're protecting, in this case, the mayor because she made the request, and that's transparency protects her, so.
Okay.
Even though it's a hundred bucks, but if it's ten bucks, it's still an ethics complaint without this process.
Yep.
Not on with Larry.
Okay, so, and then from there, we don't expect any executive session, city administrators report, you'll have committees reports, any council comments, we do not, yeah, we do expect some other business, apparently because someone's raising their hand, so our public, imagine that. Public Works Director, Hello, Earl.
Miniball.
Very quickly, water board, in case you have notes, I know what Larry has, is doing construction on Mead Street, place in the waterline. Their state, they are actually gonna get into Virginia, anticipating tomorrow night, actually, and they will be working at night as, in accordance with their state highway permit, but they need permission from city council to be able to do night work within city limits.
So night work's getting added?
And I believe, I will verify, but I believe that's tomorrow night's anticipated, so.
Well, at least they gave us notice, I mean, they didn't give notice before they started ripping up the street.
Right.
All right, so Ms. Macy, can you address that? And before you go, let's see, we have, it's not us, obviously, but the weather, we have how many water leaks, infrastructure leaks, and you wanna talk about quickly, infrastructure before you walk away?
Uh-huh.
And why you have to take care of aging infrastructure?
Dave already gave you the punchline. The water board today is fixing three water leaks, one on Newmark, one on Pony Slu Road, and one on Fifth Street, Coos Bay. These are all water lines that have separated and started tearing up our street besides...
Probably from the bumps.
Yeah, making small bumps, but... So, stuff happens, I mean, our infrastructure's aging, and this is just kind of a classic example of what can happen, their stuff's aging too, they actually have better long-term financing than we do in place, I mean, they have been raising their rates for years, as you all well know, and have had a capital improvement schedule to do so, but they have focused recently on replacing their tanks, and here we have, in one day, three water lines breaking, and hopefully it won't freeze tonight, in case there's, then water spilled.
Yep.
Be nice to break.
All right, that's all from the agenda.
All right, I guess we're adjourned.
You're not hitting the hammer.